Welcome. Thank you for joining us today, September 29th, 2022, with the Virtual Candidate Forum for the Piedmont Unified School District Board of Education. I'm Jennifer Nixon, a member of the League of Women Voters of Piedmont. The League of Women Voters is a trusted membership organization that encourages informed and active participation in government. We do not endorse nor oppose candidates or political parties. The League participates in issue advocacy and voter education. The advocacy arm of the League may take positions on issues or ballot measures. This forum is presented by the education arm of the League, which does not take positions or advocate for them. Before we introduce the candidates, I have a few logistical items to review for everyone. The candidates have all agreed to participate under guidelines set for this forum. Microphones are muted for everyone except the candidates and the moderator. Video images will show the candidates and your moderator. We're recording this forum and we'll be posting it via the League of Women Voters of Piedmont's YouTube channel and website. It is broadcast on KCOM and will be available online on the city's website. The links will be posted in the chat box. Our candidates for the Board of Education are Shirley Hui, Ruchi Metacar, and Lindsay Thomason. Good to see you tonight, and thank you for being here. I'd next like to present a bit of background information about this office before we begin. A five-member Board of Education oversees the school district. The members are elected at large and serve for a maximum of two consecutive four-year terms. Board members are accessible to the community and integrate public input into their deliberations and decision-making. The Board acts in the best interest of all students, reviews and approves the budget, authorizes expenditures, employs all personnel, including the superintendent, and develops local education vision, district goals, and policy within the limits of the state education code. School board members serve as liaisons on several committees or boards of other support groups, such as the City District Liaison Committee, Piedmont Educational Foundation, each of the Parents Clubs, Curriculum Council, Athletic Boosters, and the Special Education District Advisory Committee. You can vote for two of the candidates. You are here because you want to make smart choices when you vote. The League is here to help you make a smart choice using a few simple rules to be sure that you have the information you'll need to help you make that decision through a fair and balanced process. It's important to the League to give the community a voice, which is why we invited the community to send us questions for the candidates in advance. Those questions have been sorted by a team of League leaders to avoid duplicate questions and select those questions that are most important to the community. We will not be taking questions during this forum. The Q and A and chat features have been turned off to minimize distraction. I'll remind the candidates of key ground rules. Each candidate will have two minutes for an opening statement. To keep the discussion flowing, candidates will be expected to keep answers to questions to one and a half minutes. These will be timed, and the timer clock can be seen by all. In order to be fair to the other candidates, if you run over, I'll need to cut you off. We'll switch up the order so each candidate has a chance to answer first. I've randomly selected the first speaker, and it will be Ruchi. At the end of the Q and A section, each candidate will have one minute to provide a closing statement. Now let's begin with our first candidate, Ruchi, for your opening statement. Two minutes.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum and to the community for participating. My name is Ruchi Metacar, and I wanted to tell you a little bit about myself and why I'm running. I'm a California girl. I grew up in the Bay Area. I did leave, but I went to MIT for undergrad and to UCLA for grad school. I'm a scientist by training, but I'm responsible now for product and strategy at a healthcare IT company. When it came to buying a house, my husband and I knew exactly what we wanted: good schools and a community where we could build a life for ourselves, probably because we spent so much time moving around for our education. We moved here in 2016. One neighbor brought us homemade cookies, and the other brought us cupcakes. We love all baked goods, so we were delighted, and we honestly couldn't believe a place like this still existed. We have a kindergartner and a fourth grader at Beach, but that doesn't really tell you why I'm running. When I was pregnant, I remember crying in a bathroom at work. It wasn't because I was pregnant. It was the day after the election in 2016. Everyone said that the best way to take action was at the local level and that the community that you're part of is the place that you can make those changes. And people have different response mechanisms, but when I get mad, I get to work. I joined BPO thanks to that cupcake neighbor, and then I joined Budget Advisory Committee, LCAP Site Council. I'm on the city's Recreation Commission. I'm on the Board of PEF. I was president of the Beach Parent Club at the height of COVID. I saw how impossible things were and how frustrated everyone was. The feeling is similar now, but the context is entirely different. Our kids are coming out of COVID with learning loss and a mental health crisis. I'm running for school board because we're hiring a superintendent, and I want to be part of that decision. My priorities are to strengthen district academics at all grade levels, to foster curiosity and creative thinking in our students, to strengthen relationships between teachers, administrators, and parents, and to provide equitable opportunities that promote our students' emotional well-being. If you ask anyone I've worked with in any of these volunteer experiences, you'll find that I'm a critical thinker. I ask tough questions because I'm a scientist. It's part of my training.
Thank you. Shirley?
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum, and most of all, thank you to Ms. Nixon for moderating. My name is Shirley Hui. I'm a ten-year Piedmont resident with two children. My oldest is a student at Piedmont Middle School, and my younger child is a student at Havens Elementary. Two of the main reasons I am running for the Piedmont School Board include, number one, ensuring current students and future generations are provided a quality and challenging education in a safe and inclusive environment; and two, to foster positive relationship between students, parents, teachers, coaches, and administration. Having chosen to exclusively support at-risk, low-income children, I was an active member with Children's Support League of the East Bay for ten years. And for the past twenty-somewhat years, I've been a volunteer at various Oakland Title I schools in different capacities. Although I do not have the impressive Piedmont volunteer experience that the other two candidates have, I will be able to offer an outsider's perspective with a differing opinion. All three candidates sit here before you with similar goals and messages. As a voter, you should ask yourself, why is this candidate different from that candidate if they all have the same goals? I come to this election with a business mindset. I think outside the box for ideas to reach solutions. As a candidate, I will not promise you anything because promises are easy to make, but harder to fulfill. I assure you that I will listen, take your opinions and criticism in earnest in order to find solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Lindsay, you're next.
Hi. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting us this evening. I really appreciate the opportunity to engage with my fellow candidates and the community. My name is Lindsay Thomason. I too went all the way through California public schools from kindergarten through UC Berkeley for my undergrad and UC San Diego for my master's degree. I have three children: a seventh grader at PMS, a second grader at Havens, and a three-year-old who will be in kindergarten in the fall of 2024. If elected, I will have students in elementary, middle, and high school during my term in office. I have a very personal stake in the ongoing success of our schools. We've not had an individual with current elementary or middle school students on the board for some time. I have both. This is a unique perspective I would bring to the Board. It is critical that we have a parent with students in the district as part of the superintendent hiring process and as we make decisions that affect our students and schools. Experience matters. My extensive volunteer experiences in the community, including as the Havens Parent Club President during the pandemic, as an elected parent representative on the Superintendent Community Advisory Committee, and as a parent representative on the LCAP Committee, among other roles, have given me a front row seat to the strengths and challenges the district is facing. Through these roles, I've built key relationships, developed a strong understanding of how a district operates, learned the challenges of balancing oftentimes conflicting interests, and developed an understanding of the levers of change in our district. I feel strongly that getting involved and being a part of the solution is essential to effectuating change and involvement. I believe now more than ever, we must prioritize meaningful community dialogue, be pragmatic, proactive, creative, and ensure that all stakeholders are engaged in our decision-making processes and always put students first. If elected, my top priority would be that Piedmont schools are a place where all students are able to thrive. I look forward to discussing my experiences and campaign priorities in more detail this evening.
Thank you all. All right, now it's time for the candidates to answer your questions. Lindsay, you will go first, and then Shirley, and then Ruchi. All right, the first question is, in the past year or so, a number of high-level administrators have moved on or retired from PUSD. What specific steps will you take to ensure high-quality candidates are recruited and retained? And as part of your answer, please discuss how you see your role as a school board member with respect to the superintendent of schools. Lindsay?
Thank you again. So I see that the administration, the loss of administrators is very similar to the the loss of a significant number of teachers in the last few years. And I think that our ability to recruit and retain excellent, diverse, and engaged educators across the board, from administrators down to the paraprofessional level, will be critical to PTUSD's continued ability to provide academic excellence to all its students. I am committed to ensuring that we have high-quality teachers and administrators. I think the first thing that's critical that we think about is ensuring we offer competitive compensation packages, both pay and benefits. We must review our district budget annually to identify changes and compromises to make to pay our administrators and our teachers a competitive wage. Inadequate pay for teachers and administrators is a statewide issue, and the status quo is unsustainable. We must also ensure that our teachers and administrators feel supported by the parents and community as a whole. The past two years have been divisive and provides us with opportunities to come together and discuss our priorities, find commonalities, and develop tangible solutions to some of our most pressing challenges. We must find our way back to the community ethos of yes, we can, and the sentiment that we are all on the same page. Thank you.
All right. Shirley?
My apologies. Obviously, in terms of retaining and recruiting teachers, we definitely need to offer a better competitive compensation package, and we also have to think outside the box in terms of what else can we offer. We need to take a look to see if we could provide a harmonious workplace for the teachers and administration along with a upward path to advancement within the district. So that needs to all be taken into account. We've spoken about having housing for the teachers, things like that, but I don't think it will be a solution for the near future. It's a long-term goal that we have to look at. But in the meantime, we just have to think outside the box. Okay, what do we need to do? How do we need to retain and recruit teachers and superintendents into the school district without going over our budget? So we definitely need to reevaluate our budget every single year. Thank you.
Thank you. Ruchi?
So I'm going to say something a bit controversial. In my professional career, when someone moves on, it's a sad thing because of all the knowledge that's lost, but it's also a really happy thing for those individuals. We don't want to be a place that has stagnant ideas and where there isn't turnover and there isn't an advancement in the way that you think things. I think about my tenure as the BPO president and transitioning over to the next president, who was highly capable, was a bit tough, right? But she built on my ideas, and she took them to a place that I could never have even dreamed of because that's what you're meant to do. I have a similar vision for hiring and retaining the superintendent, but also the administrators, and as the fellow candidates have said, teachers as well. I believe strongly that we need to take a look at our budget and stop thinking about negotiations between us versus them. A school district with beautiful shiny buildings is actually nothing at all without our staff, whether it's teachers, administrators, or the superintendent. We really are nothing. Our students need someone to learn from, people to learn from. And so my vote is to, like the fellow candidates have said, to be creative, but to think about how we can leverage one-time dollars that we get from the state specifically and translate that into perhaps bonuses or salary augmentations that would allow folks a way to live in our very expensive neighborhood.
Thank you. All right, on to our second question. Shirley, you're going to go first on this one. What do you think are the most important issues facing the schools, and how would you propose to address them?
Well, obviously, the most important thing is recruitment and retention of teachers, and we just spoke in regards to that in terms of how to handle that. I think the second most important thing is the loss of the students that we keep losing. And so I think we need to step back and ask ourselves, ask ourselves, okay, why are they leaving? Where are they going? What is Piedmont not offering them? What can Piedmont do to retain those students? So there's a variety of issues that we actually have to take a look at and think about, again, I hate to say it, outside the box to see how we can come with solutions that will work within our budget to be able to retain these students. Thank you.
Okay. Ruchi, you're next.
Thanks. So I think our district has a culture problem and a personnel problem, and both of those were exacerbated by COVID. Morale is down amongst our teachers and our administrators. I saw how they worked around the clock and during the summers to try and meet the needs of our students. That doesn't negate the fact that students and families suffered too, but we all did. We were really in an exceptional circumstance. And a core objective of mine is to regain and rebuild that trust between families, administrators, and teachers. Our culture is an equal part of this problem. We need to improve transparency and communication in our district. We have to use reasoned analysis to understand the root cause and underlying issues, including the one that candidate Hui said about why students are leaving our district. Because as long as they leave our district, we can't serve them. We won't get those dollars from the district as well, which contributes and exacerbates to our budget problem. We need to be able to have nuanced conversations that lead to true buy-in from stakeholders, and we have to give people agency, and we should be connecting with respected experts in the field. Most of all, we have to create a culture that really allows for us to listen non-defensively and that allows us to make mistakes if we're able to rectify them quickly.
Lindsay, you're next.
Hi. I am building on what the other two have said. I share the concern about student loss and declining enrollment. And I think from one thing that we could do and should be doing is both doing exit interviews or something similar when we lose a student. And that could actually go to administrators and teachers as well, back to the previous question. And also, as new families move into our district, which I've met a number of families as I've been campaigning, who moved into our district recently, speak to them and understand why it is, what attracted them to our district. Why did they decide to move to Piedmont? Because very often, it's our schools, and it's a very calculated decision on those families' part. So what are we doing right? And we should continue doing, and then what are some areas of improvement? And having those conversations is critical. I also think the teacher retention issue, which we previously spoke to, is a key concern, and hiring a superintendent who is aligned in our values and who will take us to the next level. I've been incredibly impressed with Superintendent Evans and his ability to see the strengths of our district and see the areas of improvement. And I think that using him as someone who has inside knowledge now, but a significant experience dealing with districts similar to Piedmont and very different from Piedmont would be excellent.
Thank you. All right, we're moving on to the third question, and Ruchi, you'll go first. Reported incidences involving bigotry and sexual assault among students is troubling. How do you believe the Board of Education can most effectively address these problems? Ruchi?
So first and foremost, school needs to be a safe and an encouraging environment for all students. The environment is necessary so that kids feel comfortable trying new things, failing, picking themselves up again, and learning. And if there is an incident of sexual assault or bigotry, that's not even possible. In my mind, there are two pieces to this that the school board can impact. The first is education, and the second is resolution. For both education and resolution, we need to know what the issues are. And the best way to get at that is to talk to teachers, counselors, and staff who have the best on-the-ground knowledge of what's going on in the schools. We can also get to this in a more abstract way through the Family Identity Survey, which is given to the elementary school, and this was the first year for the middle school and the high school, the Healthy Kids Survey, and the Affinity Mentorship Program. In my mind, the goal of the school board is to create the processes that would allow for the administration and the teachers to prevent these types of incidents from happening and to rely, again, on education and resolution. The resolution piece, to just wrap up, is basically when an incident has occurred, how do you react to it and how do you respond to it? The ideal goal is to foster this community that's comforting and welcoming to all students, staff, and families.
Thank you. Lindsay?
It's extremely concerning to hear about these events in our community. There is no place for discrimination or bullying in Piedmont. Our school board recently updated the district on discrimination and harassment policy, which is a good start. It's a recognition that we have an issue. However, I feel strongly that we need to educate our kids about what behaviors constitute bullying or discrimination and ensure they are aware of the possible repercussions when bullying, discrimination, harassment, or assault occurs. We need to create processes and systems as a board to deal with these issues. We need to create a culture where students feel safe standing up for themselves and notifying a safe adult when they are not able or don't want to address bullying or discrimination on their own. Just today, I heard from a high school parent about an incident that occurred last year, and their child, though extremely concerned, opted not to report it, both for fear of social reprisal and because there is a sense that repercussions are inconsistent for perpetrators. Ideally, the goal should be to prevent bullying and discrimination from occurring in the first place for education. However, when it does occur, particularly when it is egregious, like when swastikas have appeared in school spaces or blatantly racist acts or sexual assault have occurred, it is important that there is a known process to communicate with the community, investigate what occurred, and punish the perpetrators as appropriate.
Thank you. Shirley?
Yes. There is no room whatsoever in Piedmont for sexual assault and discrimination or bigotry. The school board really needs to take a look at the policies to see what can be implemented or further implemented in terms of a punishment of some sort. Many people do not like punishments, but I think it comes down to a punishment issue at this point. There needs to be more communication between the school district and parents in regards to any incidents that happen in these cases and help these children get in contact with with the needed help that they need. The Wellness Center should be a place that is a safe zone, definitely for sexual assault victims to go and obtain help that they need. And in terms of the bigotry, discrimination in town, that needs to be addressed further within the school board and administration and the parents. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, question number four. Lindsay, you're going to go first. Do you support incorporating the principles of equity, diversity, and inclusion in the educational competencies and outcomes for our students? Please explain why or why not.
So I think first and foremost, we have to have a school environment where students feel included and like they belong. And we know that students learn best when they feel that they are in a safe environment, when they see characters like themselves in books, when they feel that they are a part of a larger community. I think that we must reconcile the tension between academic excellence and diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging initiatives, also known as DEIB, because this is not a neither-or scenario. We can have both. We can have a robust academic program and an inclusive environment while all students have access to curriculum and courses that meet them where they are at or differentiated learning options. We should create an environment where all students are appropriately challenged, yet feel they have the necessary opportunities and supports to thrive, where they are graduated and prepared for the universities of career and/or careers of their choosing. I think we have a good start in our community. I think that there's some really great work happening in our elementary schools, like the Buddy Program, the affinity mentorship program between elementary students and high school students. But I think we have a long way to go at ensuring that all students in Piedmont do feel like they belong here and included.
Thank you. Shirley?
The DEI program in Piedmont is extremely important. The United States was built on the back of immigrants. As a child of Chinese immigrants, I've seen my parents go through discrimination, and I experience discrimination on an underlying basis every single day. We need to be sure that we bring in the students, faculty, administration. We need a diverse arena of people here in the school district. The more diverse, the better. The diversity will bring in wonderful ideas and thoughts that other districts may not be able to experience. Thank you.
Ruchi?
Can I clarify that the question was about principles, or was it?
No. It means like the
Principles.
The principles of equality, diversity, and inclusion.
Okay, got it. Thank you. So I think about why we send our kids to school, and public school in particular, and it's about them getting knowledge and skills. And diversity, equity, and inclusion is a big topic in our community and also nationally. And I approach discussions of DEI with sensitivity and care. I am probably, obviously, a person of color and a woman, but it can help to think concretely about what we can directly influence through our mission of providing public education. As with every other type of instruction, DEI involves imparting key knowledge and skills to our students and to our staff. As a first step, the district needs to talk more broadly about problems or incidents that happen within the district, like I mentioned in my previous answer. We have to listen non-defensively to community members and understand what their experiences are like. The district is studying the issue, but I think many findings and data points remain to be shared and thoroughly discussed. As a member of the school board, I would intend to encourage this process of information gathering, analysis, transparent communication, and open discussion. We are really indebted to the past and to the current educators and leaders and volunteers who helped to put in place excellent resources, such as the Wellness Center and the social-emotional curriculum at the elementary level. And we can learn from successes in these areas when addressing needs across the district. It is important that we teach all of our students the processes and tools to develop resilience and grit so that they can thrive in every context.
Thank you. All right, on to question number five. Shirley, you're going to go first on this. Measure H, which passed in 2019, provided for tax revenue that was to be used for the specific purpose of attracting and retaining teachers and education support staff. Explain whether you think Measure H fulfilled its purpose, and has there been sufficient oversight for the funds? Shirley?
I believe that Measure Eight has not quite fulfilled. The teachers have asked for a COLA raise of 7.5% along with a one-time bonus, and they've received their 7.5% along with, I believe, $1,500 one-time bonus as of last night. But I believe that we could do a little bit more. There needs possibly some more oversight in regards to how the budget is handled to make sure the teachers and the coaches, administrators, and staff are receiving that money, just to make sure that other programs are not being unfunded. My apologies again. Unfunded, unfairly unfunded. My apologies again. Unfunded, unfairly unfunded. Thank you.
Okay, Ruchi?
Um, so I was actually part of the final parcel tax subcommittee, which was a sub-part of the Budget Advisory Commission this year. And I first have to, every opportunity that I can, to give a shout out to our amazing CFO, Ruth Aladoyan. I, I wanna take the opportunity to do that. Measure H, um, basically levied a specific amount of money on our parcels. And, um, when you ask, uh, when you, when you think more broadly about the impact to teachers, right? And you look at the schedule for teacher pay, teachers, uh, one, perhaps, perhaps this is not super well-known, but a lot of our teachers are reaching the end of their tenure and they're about to retire. And those teachers are actually at the top end of the pay scale. The new teachers coming in, their pay is quite low, actually, relatively speaking, and particularly for living in a community like Piedmont. So I agree with candidate Hui that, um, we could do more than what we have done with Measures G and H. Specifically, what I would like to do is address the lower end of that pay scale to be able to attract the new generation of teachers that are gonna be teaching our students.
Lindsay?
So, um, I concur with, with what the previous two candidates, the other two candidates have said in that we, we continue to have a pay problem in Piedmont. As Ruchi just mentioned, we do have quite a few teachers at the top end of the pay scale, which means that shortly we are gonna lose some very experienced teachers. However, we will have additional funds to help recruit and retain less experienced younger teachers with significantly less tenure. Um, I think this is a more significant issue than just Measure H. It rolled into that this is the fact that this is a fixed set of funds. You know, I've, I've been on board meetings in the past where the board is concerned about the sustainability of these funds because the situ- the reality is that if the, the voters of Piedmont opt not to renew, renew Measures G and H, we would not be able to pay our teachers the amount we've committed to them in contracts. So the sustainability of funds is a critical issue that we have to address as a district. California under funds our schools relative to other states like Massachusetts and New York. And finding, ensuring that we have a sustainable funding source in the long term beyond PEF, Measures G and H, et cetera, is critical.
Thank you. All right, question number six, and Ruchi, you're gonna go first. What are the three most important things our children can learn at school? And what would your role as a member of the Board of Education be to help prepare our children for a changing world?
That's a great question. Um, so I go back to knowledge and skills, which is, I think, the purpose of an education and specifically a public school education. Knowledge and skills pretty much prepares you for, for anything, right? And it's dependent on a couple of things. High-quality math, uh, materials, which means curriculum, high-quality methods, and high-quality investment in professional development for our teachers. Some of you may not be aware, but at the elementary level, we actually haven't had a significant professional development budget for our teachers and for our staff. And even if we are able to hire the best and the brightest teachers, my firm belief is that people need to continue to grow and to be educated, um, and they need to be able to thrive in their own careers and, and in their own career trajectories. And so for me, doubling down on knowledge and skills for students is incredibly important. There's another part to skills, and that's how you interact with and how you're involved with your community at large. One of the interesting things about Piedmont is that our city is changing, right? There are lots of new faces and they don't always look the same. I've had a tremendously incredible experience here, and I, um, when people ask me what it's like to live here, I talk the town up constantly. I talk about how idyllic it is, what the festivals are like, how charming the schools are, how amazing my teachers, uh, my kids' teachers are, and I want that experience to be available for everyone.
Lindsay?
This is a really great question. Um, so I'm a really firm believer in the transformative power of a public, a quality public education. I, um, as I mentioned previously, I went all the way through California public schools. And I believe firmly that first and foremost, our schools should empower students to achieve their fullest potentials as productive citizens and provide all students with what they need to be successful in the university, career, and beyond, regardless of their ethnicity, race, gender, affiliate, religious affiliation, or ability. Similar to what Ruchi said, our public schools are a melting pot for our broader community. And I, I think that they need to provide critical thinking skills, but they also need to teach our students how to collaborate. In the careers of our, in the future careers of our students, collaboration is critical. We're learning to work in groups, learning to work with people who are different or might have different viewpoints, perspectives, abilities than you, is the, is a critical skill to succeed in the twenty-first century. I also think that we have to teach our kids social, emotional resilience. And that can be done through teaching our children both their own limitations and boundaries, but also when to seek help, when to seek out.
Thank you. Shirley?
Assistance through
Sorry, uh, uh, there, there was a gap there. Did you wanna finish your songs?
No, I just said through some of the other support mechanisms in our community.
All right, thank you. Um, okay, Shirley?
Well, obviously, the number one thing for, uh, kids to learn is a curriculum. We are in an ever-changing world where the world stage is just becoming so much more competitive that our children are just struggling to keep afloat and ahead of the other students. A second thing that I would say that is important for the school is diversity. In order for the kids to be able to work amongst others, they also need to know how to play with others. And a third thing would be critical thinking skills. Without critical thinking skills, these children being put out into the world will not be able to function properly. Thank you.
Right. All right, we're moving on to question number seven, and Lindsay, you're gonna go first on this one. How will you work to foster an environment of transparency and healthy communication between the board and the community?
That is, um, an excellent question. It's something that is very near and dear to my heart. Transparency is a buzzword that means different things to different people. To me, it means making decisions in a way that stakeholders feel engaged in the outcome. In a small town like Piedmont, it means having ample opportunities for stakeholders to have discussions around the issues that are important to them. It means proactively getting parents, teachers, administrators, and other community members around a table to discuss challenges we are facing. If elected to the board, one way I would like to achieve this is by creating board commissions or committees similar to what the Piedmont City Council's Park Commission, Planning Commission, Bond Oversight Committee, and the multiple other groups that report to our city council. These groups are made up, are a representative group of stakeholders, many of whom have subject matter expertise, apply and are appointed for a set period of time, typically three years. And each of these bodies provides recommendations to the council on policies and projects, and some make decisions on matters specifically delegated to them. Meetings of these commissions and committees are open to the public, and the agenda for each meeting is published in advance in accordance with the provisions of the Brown Act. These groups, similar groups for the school board, would ensure that we have a forum for parents and other community members to engage in meaningful ways and also gather stakeholder feedback before decisions are made.
Thank you. Shirley?
Would you, would you repeat that question, please?
Sure. How will you foster an environment? How, how will you work to foster an environment of transparency and healthy communication between the board and the community?
I would encourage the community to come out to board meetings or contact the board direct, uh, board members directly in order to place their input in regards to what they need or would like to happen in the school district. Without their input, we do not know what is needed in the district. And so we must rely on the stakeholders to come out and let us know. Thank you.
All right, Ruchi?
So I, I wholeheartedly agree that transparency and healthy communication are, are essential to being able to work together. Um, and that's one of the reasons why, um, one of my core platform values is to break down the barriers between administrators, teachers, and parents. I think, um, definitely during COVID and perhaps before COVID, these barriers were put in place kind of artificially, and conversations happened on an ad hoc basis. And I can speak at least from the parent's side, that parents share the information that they got from teachers or from administrators with each other, kind of like a grassroots network. At the same time, our board members are tremendously available. Uh, when you outlined, um, kind of what the involvement level is like, they're, they're pretty much at every single forum and every, every meeting that exists in town. My, my, um, focus is on three specific things that I think are important. So one is around DEIB incidents, which I've already kind of talked about. The second is around the curriculum process. We used to have a curriculum forum, which hasn't met since two thousand and fourteen. It, it's something that other districts do. It allows parents, administrators, teachers, the entire community to come together with experts and, and really discuss what type of curriculum is being adopted. And then the third is actually something that happened this week, which is the mission and the vision statement of the district. I would love to see that publicly released so that the community has more time to process it and respond to it and react to it.
Thank you all. All right, this is the eighth question, and Shirley, you're gonna go first. Right. The Piedmont Police Department has reapplied for the tobacco grant, which funds the school resource officer. Do you support having an armed police officer closely working within the school district? Especially when many cities are eliminating school police departments? Why or why not?
Well, that's a tough one. Um, I know initially, a few years ago, when they spoke about having the police officer on-site with a gun, there was quite a bit of input from the community in regards to whether, whether, whether or not to have that officer on-site. With the increased shootings throughout the country, I don't know whether one single armed police officer would be able to handle a situation like that. So I would actually say that I would need to do additional research and, and just to see whether having this resource officer on-site would be beneficial or not to the students and the school district. Thank you.
Ruchi?
Um, so I don't know the specifics of the tobacco grant, and I don't, um, fully understand why school resource officers have to be on campus. Having said that, I can, I can kind of talk about my own experience, uh, of seeing an armed officer at the gate of the, of the school during drop-off one day. I have honestly, like I'm sure many of us do, really, really mixed and hard feelings about this. On the one hand, I think despite anything that we on the school board can control, there are guns in our community, and there are guns around town, I'm sure. And, um, my, my thought about school resource officers is that they're meant to be kind of a friendly face, and they're meant to be people that the kids can trust. We are very lucky in this town. Our town is small, our community, our, our police department is, is pretty incredible and very impressive. They're highly professional. And I think that they've done a lot of work in opening up their data and making it available and accessible to look for incidents of bias, which is pretty cool, given how small but mighty our, our department is. Um, I don't have a problem with an officer with a gun per se, because they're trained to use them. And I, I mean, it, so I think my question would be more around what the tobacco grant is and, and how that specifically requires a resource officer. I'll do more diligence into it.
Lindsay?
Hi, I just wanna use a small part of my time to finish my question from the last answer and build on what Ruchi said and concur with her. Speaking about the board committees that I'm suggesting, the first one that I would love to see formed is a curriculum committee to improve transparency into the curriculum selection and adoptive, adoption processes and allow for teachers and parent subject matter experts to engage throughout that process. That would, this would be a vast improvement over the opaque, top-down curriculum, current curriculum adoption process. Pivoting to the current question about the juvenile resource officer, I actually had an opportunity to speak with Chief Bowers about this and a handful of other issues. And I thought his response was quite insightful. He said that rolling out the juvenile and resource officer position was a good learning experience for them all. And there were people who were concerned about having an armed officer on campus. And at the end of the day, they did not, they decided not to have an armed officer on campus. We do not currently have an armed officer on campus. PPD does see quite a few activities in terms of behaviors, drugs, alcohol, consent issue, sexual assault. And the juvenile officer's primary activity is being proactive in terms of educating students and avoiding bigger issues down the road. The Chief Bowers feels this has been successful, and the officers, the officer has reached students and helped with mental health issues.
Thank you. All right, what, uh, number nine, and it's gonna be Ruchi first. What steps will you propose during your first term to reduce district emissions and improve sustainability practices and procedures?
So I think our, our city has done a tremendous amount in making progress towards, um, reducing emissions overall and trying to gain community buy-in, um, on, on that topic. To be completely honest with you, it's not an area that I know tremendously, um, a lot about. What I can tell you is that the parents that I've talked to, this is like a very micro version of the, of the problem that you're talking about. Um, but the parents that I've talked to have expressed concern about the amount of waste that we're generating, the amount of plastic and compostable, like where we could be using compostable materials. For example, um, in our lunch program and in the packaging around our lunches. But as far as emissions are concerned and what the specific role of the school board would be in that, I would have to do some research and get back to you. Happy to post that on my website as a follow-up.
Lindsay?
Similarly, this isn't something I have looked into specifically with relation to our schools. And I do know that there was a, a group of students who was, uh, very active in fundraising for solar panels, which were initially supposed to be, um, a part of the steam building process, but were cut due to budget cuts. And I believe that they were able to partially fundraise to put those solar panels in place. I also understand that there, that same group of students, um, or that may have been a subset of a larger group, um, known as the Green Team, is very active in sustainability issues at the high school. And I think it would be phenomenal if we allowed those students to lead or engage with our middle and elementary students around issues of sustainability and emissions. This seems like an excellent opportunity to allow older students to come into our, um, middle and elementary schools and teach our students and help come up with community-led initiatives and solutions to sustainability, emissions, and waste reduction concerns.
Thank you. Shirley?
In terms of sustainability, I would, from my volunteer work at the middle school, there is an enormous amount of waste in terms of plastic and trays such as those. I think we should consider actually moving towards paper goods where it is compostable and recyclable. I've also noticed that at the middle school, the food cannot be donated to shelters. They, the food actually has to be thrown away, and I'm hoping to find a solution in regards to that. Um, in terms of emissions, I do not know much about the emissions issues with the school district. Thank you.
All right. All right, we're gonna move into our last question, and we'll start with Lindsay on this one. And then you'll have, um, time for your closing statements. What are your recommendations for supporting the mental health of our students?
So this is an issue that I've more recently become extremely engaged with, um, through my work with the Wellness Center Support Committee. I was one of the Walk for Wellness co-chairs this year. And it, um, really helped engaging with leaders in our community, helped inform me about the significant mental health concerns amongst our students. The issues and, the issues and needs are very different based on the age of our students. Uh, at the elementary level, the best screener is, um, is a relatively new addition and has been relatively successful in identifying kids with concerns. And so they can, uh, the elementary schools can offer them targeted interventions. And so they can, the elementary schools can offer them targeted interventions. I have heard some concerns about the transition from elementary to middle school and the significant issues that, mental health issues that are occurring younger and younger, issues that used to occur in our high schoolers and now are occurring in our middle schoolers. The Wellness Center has recently improved and enhanced its services at the middle school, and I would like to see that continue further so that we are able to offer suit services at that level. At the high school level, improving communication around what the Wellness Center does offer and improving proactive, social, emotional, and wellness lessons for all students is critical.
Thank you. Shirley?
In regards to the mental health, obviously, we need to ensure that there's necessary funds to retain quality, diverse, mental health specialists for the Wellness Center. And we need to de-stigmatize mental illness by promoting mental health awareness on campus. There is just so much stigmatization in regards to mental health that we just need to break through that barrier. Thank you.
Okay, and Ruchi?
Mental health is something that's really near and dear to my heart. My nieces and nephew are in high school in a district that's similar to the Piedmont School District. And I've watched them over the course of the pandemic and coming beyond it, struggle with mental health issues and really rely tremendously on the support that they were able to get from the school and then transition that into college. And one of the things that I, I really appreciated about Lindsay's response was that the needs of the students change and evolve as they grow from elementary to middle and high school. So there are a couple of things that we are doing pretty well, I think. One, one thing is like we, we have some concrete information about the needs of kids. So we have screening tools and surveys, and we rely on our teachers to help identify students that are in need. And I think that there is, there are also forums where the administrators get to hear stories from the families, right? So they understand what, what is happening in, in the homes. The district has some resources that we can leverage, like the Wellness Center, which Lindsay talked about and Shirley talked about. There are learning specialists in the schools, and we have some really talented educators. We received some one-time financial resources from the state to address COVID-related learning laws. And I know that we've identified some areas where those funds can be used. But I, I agree that it's a tremendous problem, and we need to highlight and allow our kids to get access to those resources.
Thank you all. All right, now the candidates will make closing statements. We will reverse the order that we began with. Lindsay, you'll go first, then Shirley and Ruchi. You each have one, one minute.
Thank you again to the League of Women Voters and our moderator for hosting this evening's event. And thank you to our community members for attending. I appreciate the opportunity to discuss the issues facing our district tonight. To return to where I started, I want to reiterate my priorities if I'm elected to serve on the school board. I would work to, one, provide all P U S D students with an excellent, well-rounded academic experience with the essential steam, language arts, and critical thinking skills necessary to succeed at the universities and the careers that they're choosing. Two, support robust social, emotional learning to ensure students develop positive relationships, healthy identities, and make responsible decisions. Three, rebuild trust and accountability, ensuring transparency across the district. Four, attract and retain excellent, diverse, and engaged educators. And five, consistently engage with all key stakeholders, groups, working collaboratively as decisions are made. Thank you again and have a wonderful evening.
All right, Shirley?
In closing, I'd like to thank everyone this evening. I would like to acknowledge the teachers and coaches that spend so much time with our children, helping to guide our children as they grow by instilling important values that our families stand by, such as hard work, be honest and fair, and no cheating and plagiarizing, values that they will take into adulthood. In the next few weeks, when you receive your ballot, I ask you not to vote for me because I am your friend or neighbor, but vote for me if you believe that I can do the job. Thank you.
Okay, Ruchi?
Thank you so much to the League of Women Voters and to the community for these thoughtful questions. I think in closing, I just want to hearken back to the extensive experience that I have. I was parent club president during the deepest part of the pandemic, and instead of running away from that, I've doubled down on my engagement with this community. I value the constructive relationships that I've developed with people. And even, even though I feel like I know a lot about the district, I can see clearly based on the questions that I have a lot left to learn. And that's the, that's the attitude and the approach that I will take if I'm elected to school board. The district is at a crossroads, and it's a really exciting moment. We're coming out of this really difficult period of the pandemic, and we're hiring a new superintendent. We need people on the board that are rational, that will work hard, that will listen to people, meet people where they are, have healthy communication styles, and that will build bridges. I'm excited about this opportunity, and I am a good choice because I have the skills and the attitude to bring people together. Thank you for listening.
Well, thank you to our candidates for running for this office and for their participation this evening. And thank you to our audience participants and to your interest in, in making informed choices. Your local leagues also participate in Voters Edge, an online collection of candidates' information. We encourage you to view the candidates' resumes, platforms, and positions there. The web address is votersedge.org. Local leagues will also be hosting numerous additional forums for local candidates who will be on your ballot. Please visit these websites using the links you see on the screen. And also that will also be posted in the chat box. There you can find information about these upcoming forums, including how to attend and how to submit questions in advance. You can also access recordings of previous forums there. Members of the League of Women Voters do the hands-on work to defend democracy and empower voters. While we never endorse a candidate, we're directly involved in shaping important issues to keep our community strong. If you would like to be involved in the, with the women and men helping make democracy work for everyone, it's easy to join the league. You can register to vote online through October twenty-fourth at five PM. Same-day registration is available in person through Election Day, November eighth. Ballots will be, begin to be mailed out October tenth. And you can vote in person, by mail, or place your ballot in the official Alameda County ballot drop box located on Highland Way. Please remember to cast your ballot on or before Election Day, November eighth. Encourage your family, friends, and neighbors to vote. If you haven't already, please respond to the very quick two-question poll that you should see on your screen. The league values your feedback. You will also receive a one-question survey in your browser window after you leave the webinar. Please take a moment to give us your written feedback.